Okay, nine oh five, we're gonna call this Adams County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I understand we got some individuals gonna do the Lord's Prayer for us, for our... ...implication. You stand right there. You face the flag if you want to, because that's what we're gonna do anyway later. You gonna go ahead and start the implication?
Set the prayer.
For our in heaven, how will be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to the rest from evil. The kingdom and power of the Lord shall be revealed. Amen.
My pleasure, ladies.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, y'all gonna stay right there or you don't mind? Probably didn't have to be so nervous about that. I completely understand. I'll face, this is yours, thank you. And Natalie, this is yours, if y'all turn around and face everybody that wants to take a picture. He just used to hand the ring to the kids. Okay, is this a misprint reappointment? On the agenda?
Yes.
I need a motion for approval of minutes from February two thousand point five.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the dockets. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? No nays, motion carries. I need approval for, or a motion to approve the monthly financial reports for Adams County Sheriff's Office, Chancery Report, and Purchasing Report. Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries. Okay. We got one. And Angela, you're in?
I'm in.
Okay. And Warren, you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay. All right, special presentations, if any? I think we already had that. Joe Fur is not supposed to be here, is he? Scott? He's not here. We'll go back, we'll go back to him. Any city government business? City government business? Departmental reports? You wanna come up here where they can hear you on the...
Hey, I feel like I'm in trouble. I don't like this either.
Hey, y'all, could y'all mute your phones unless we need you, need you to answer a question, or you have a question, please? Thank you.
I have two board orders. One is for Deborah Pruitt and Ann Holcomb on Highway sixty-one north. They were double assessed in twenty-four. And that would be a reduction of five hundred and eleven dollars and eight quarters.
Okay, I need a motion. What was it? They were just double assessed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pick it twice.
Okay. I need a motion. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
The next one, I guess you'd call it a clerical error. Ms. Pritchard came in and signed up for Homestead. When they were putting it in the computer, they forgot the one key that was given it Homestead. So, but we did catch it. And that would be a loss of nine hundred and forty-five dollars, her address is six Pritchard Lane.
I need a motion. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
Short and sweet, thank you very much.
All right, who's next?
Hello.
Morning.
Morning. Hello, hello. I'm from Christie's School with the juvenile detention center for New Hampshire.
Okay. Who you got? Have I got the paperwork? Is anybody there? Anthony Nettles, a new hire, juvenile detention officer, correctional officer, twelve dollars an hour, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. I need a motion. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Seconded by Mr. Gaines.
What a discussion.
All right, discussion.
Uh, was there a previous, um, four year Adams County before I remember that name?
Uh, I think he worked at the Sheriff's Department.
He maybe have worked at the Sheriff's, yes, he'd worked at the Sheriff's Department.
He left in good standing.
And he left in good standing.
Okay.
All right, all in favor? Any nays? Motion carries. Thank, that's all you had?
Thank you, yes sir.
And that's fair, Steve, now one more of this.
All right.
I have a few reports of the calls for the whole month of February. The NACIS PD, eighty twenty-six, the NACIS Fire Department, thirty-four, Adams County SO, and five twenty-three. I saw one request travel for myself and Marlon Swayze for the meat cap conference in Rusland on April first to April the second.
All right, God. All right, what were the names?
Marlon Swayze.
Marlon Swayze. Okay, and yourself?
Yes.
All right, y'all gonna have traveling meals?
Yes.
Yeah, I see it says anything for a hundred and seventy-four dollars. Daily room rate. Is it just gonna be one night?
Yes, one night.
All right. All right, need a motion for travel for Marlon Swayze and Netbells. Moved by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
Also, I just wanna revise on the last meeting when we discussed the fencing. I think you missed out a student. Uh, the fencing has been approved, uh, and the money is there. What we were asking at the last meeting, uh, the guy that wanted to do the fencing was asking for three installments. However, we got numerous quotes, and that was the cheapest one, because everybody we talked to, they said they could do the fencing, but they can't do the gate, so we had to hire two different people. When NACIS fencing was the one that could do all of it, and he gave us a good campaign plan. So we was only asking for the installment payment to get approved.
You can't do, like, have money up front?
I did that, but...
We explained that too. So Janine did talk to him. Uh, we did explain we can't pay him upfront, but yes, the board approved the three installments, but she didn't have either, she took off that, so she won't be clarified.
So is that an actual note?
You can't give him money up front?
No, we can't give him money. We do know that.
So if things count, it's based on percent of work that they've done, and you can pay it like that after it's been done. So what some contractors do, will have a mobilization fee or something like that, work that they have to do, that they can go ahead and get paid for when they do it, so...
That's another one.
Can't pay them for something you haven't done yet.
Yeah, I know.
And someone needs to approve that that work has been done.
Right.
That'd fall on Robbie Dollar like everything else does.
He's aware of what's going on.
Or Johnny, Johnny can do that. He sure does for the best part of me. Well, you can't tell, what's the question?
I don't, he wanted you to pay three installments, but we need that.
Being paid in installments, but you have to do it for work after done, so we can't give him money.
Three installments, he can have a payment at thirty-three percent, sixty-six percent, ninety-nine percent.
Would be getting that stuff there, and your proposal ground probably be the first installment.
Make sure you mobilize, bring some equipment, you know, bring this material. And then once he starts setting material on poles and stuff like that.
The documents.
It tells, I need you to sign on this. Okay, okay.
Good morning, Pam Clark, EMA Deputy Director. For the week of February seventeenth, we had severe weather. So we opened the safe room as a warm shelter from February nineteenth at ten o'clock until February twenty-first, ten o'clock, that morning. It was all clear, closed, and cleaned and secure. We had a total of eight residents to come in, but only six stayed overnight. Six stayed, seven meals, and one female. We provided meals, three meals, snacks. And we'd like to thank Erica Bradford, supervisor, Hudson, AJSC, Jennifer Lyles, for their contributions, the donations that they made to provide the meals for them. I also would like to thank county employee Sam Ida, Corvette McNeil, Corl Lewis, and resident Jacqueline Mossaw, because they helped staff the safe room during this event. I also would like to thank the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department for their continuous patrol and coming checking in to make sure that the staff was safe and, you know, there were no issues with the residents. At this time, we are expecting severe weather tomorrow, so we would like to ask the board to sign the DRC proclamation in preparation for that. We don't expect that we'll have to close anything down, but we'll monitor and respond accordingly. It should be in your folder.
Okay, yeah, I need a, yeah, I need a motion to declare proclamation for existence of local emergency for tomorrow. Moved by Mr. Middleton.
You really don't need to do it. I mean, you're supposed to have the president declare and then you ratify.
Okay. All right. Scrap that then, I'll just sign off on it for, and if something happens... Full board to sign?
No, I'm saying the DRC, they wouldn't do that. This is just initial one. The one for the governor, that's the one everybody needs to sign.
You say everybody does need to sign this one?
Yeah, this is just the local one, yeah. They present.
Usually the local one, your president declares, and then the board ratifies.
Right, well, I'm saying they normally, if they not the board, I mean, if he's the only one, that's why, but they gotta board me.
Yeah, we only got one other person that can.
Yeah, well, so he put his label on it, you know, just in case.
I'm just just to have the president go ahead and clear the amount of emergency, and y'all ratify it.
Okay. So we need a motion, go ahead and ratify it?
You just declared the emergency, and that was minutes ago. We can go ahead and ratify it.
All right. All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Morning, Board. Uh, Sam Ida, Veteran Service Officer with the county. I have a couple things for some upcoming events. The first one is July the seventh, we'll be having our local sand now for the veterans over at the safe room. And I get back with you with some more details on that as the event comes close. Also, on July the twenty-fifth, uh, they have the Southwest Mississippi Conference for Veterans, VSOs and Supervisors. And it'll be held at all points, and I get the information to you also.
Okay. All right. Anything else going on?
This is as usual. That's all I have, unless y'all have any questions for me.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks.
Both y'all can stay in the back, really.
Yeah, I don't need that.
Y'all kinda laugh.
I'd just like this confirmation we have aside. Uh, good morning, Board. Brad Bradford, Adams County, EMA Director, and now Fire Coordinator. Need permission to travel to Liberty, Mississippi by five coordinated meeting, uh, March the eleventh.
All right. You don't need anything signed or anything.
Yeah, you just turn around.
Moved by Mr. Middleton. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
Okay, our next travel is for the nine one one coordinator to MCATS, that's in March the third to first to April third in Liberty, Mississippi, and nine ones Association of Pancreatic.
Moved by Middleton. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries. Go ahead.
Another thing I want for the board, just let everybody know, we're not in a burn van, but we want everybody to be cautious when they burn it now, because it's dry. Uh, I don't think the state will issue a burn van now. There's a lot of farms, everybody burning off stuff, so we just gotta be careful when we burn it. Also, I'm gonna give it to State Fire Marshal Academy. People get burn vans, they need to notify us, so we don't know burn vans, though. And also, when you do burn vans, people need to understand they're responsible for the smoke, and they're responsible for the fire.
Permits? And they're getting permits?
Yeah, they get permits, but they still responsible for anything that happened outside of permit. But, go ahead.
While we're on that, there was a control burn in Eldon this weekend. I received phone calls starting about one o'clock on Saturday. And I immediately called Mr. Bradford, who'd reached out to the fire department. The fire department had already been out. Gentleman did have a permit. But I believe that in about a twenty-four hour span, the fire department got about seven calls to go out there. The fire was under control for the most part, but there was a pine tree on the roadside that could not be put out. It was hollow, had holes inside, fire was running up the tree, and the fire department went back five times just for that one tree alone. So those calls started really again early Sunday morning, and I went out, road department met me. And we determined that it was best to take the tree down. The tree was gonna fall across the road, could start another fire, who knows? But we're gonna have to get with Mr. Slomer and figure out how we're gonna approach that, because I don't feel that it's county's responsibility to put that bill. So, you know, I don't, I mean, I don't think it was on purpose or anything like that, but it wasn't taken care of, and we gotta address it, so... Do you have anything on that?
God, it was something the county couldn't handle, so I had to call Tree Coord or a bucket truck. Now, to let the tree down, you know, from the top to the bottom, to take it down, so I hadn't got a deal from this contractor yet. But it was something we had to do in an emergency situation, so...
Okay, I'll get with you. I'll get with you then.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, I did talk to Ms. West, Net West. She said that they do have a wide firefighter grant for our volunteer firefighters, and we're eligible for it due to our low income here in Adams County. And she asked me, we wanna go ahead and apply for it so we can get some new gear to try to get some of our volunteers to be able to respond to that. They do respond to that, because we wanna make sure, try to keep our calls down with the city, because every time they go out, that's, the county has to pay for that. So we trying to get our volunteers equipped with that debate house type situation, to have the proper gear that we can fight that in the county level. So I do need approval for us to try to go after those grants to get some equipment for our volunteer firefighters.
All right, need a motion. Moved by Mr. Middleton. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
That's all I have, Ken.
Can I say about that fire on Southview Drive while he's over there? And I had mentioned to you, I got a letter from Adams County Water. They called early in the week and said somebody was using water on Southview Drive hydrant. It was not the county, I don't know if it's the contractor, who it was, using their water. I received a letter last week from Adams County Water. They recommending the county remove that fire hydrant, because people were tampering with it. We cannot remove that fire hydrant, and I don't know who's tampering with it, so I mean, I feel like it's not... The road department, Adams County, is not good to remove the fire hydrant, because they can't figure out who's tampering with Adams County water hydrant.
So they probably going filling up some water trucks from it?
I feel like it might be somebody in the area bored or something, but I hadn't seen anybody out in the area bored. I mean, I look, I know it's something.
Somebody's saying.
But that's what I'm saying, so, but for us to get a letter, want us to remove the hydrant, was...
Yeah, did they know how many gallons they got outfitted there?
I don't know, I mean, you gotta have a meter hooked to it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so somebody, probably out there, probably somebody pulled their truck up to it and turned it on, getting water.
I'd give the letter to President Wilson, about a guy.
And this kinda goes back to these people bored and all that, and not having permits.
I'm gonna bring that up, me and Brian just spoke about that.
Really chase these people down.
I'm trying to figure out a better way to get that out to the public of what they need to do with these companies and these subs that come through NACIS doing it, because you're missing somebody's in the grains.
Yeah, they cut water lines.
I'm gonna check on those.
Everything else out there.
Okay, well, I give it to you as soon as you proceed.
Mr. Bradford, I had somebody call me about a fire truck out there at Sealy, that it won't hold any water.
Yeah, all it is, is just some, it won't hold water, but it can transport water to the fire department. Uh, it's not a priority yet, because it costs someone to try to fix.
Does it just need to be welded up, or is a fitting broke out?
Well, there's a fitting, and those trucks are old. You know, we're in the process now of trying to get them changed. I did speak with the city. Their main problem is us getting water. So, you know, we still have enough trucks in inventory to just, it can show the water, you know, but like I said, trying to fight a fire, we just can't go down the highway for long, spend a period of time.
It's not something we can put, I can get a welder on there and fix it. There's a good welder like a mile from there, and he'd be glad to come over and fix it.
Yeah, but like I said, I got to really see it to try to, because once you saw it, those tanks are sold, and I think it's some type of cash line. I don't, I don't know if it's a crack, or it broke out of, you know, in the threads. So, yeah, but I told you...
Let me know, because I do have a welder right, right there near it, and it's kinda, he's an older gentleman, but he doesn't mind welding still. Seventy-two, he'll still get out, get out there and weld.
I just don't want to wear the hurt, and we'd be responsible for it.
Well, there's the, all's over, haul is water, it's no, no big deal, but, yeah. He's used to welding on oak, it blows up.
How are you?
Falls, my truck did show in Eldon as well, so...
Okay. Appreciate it.
I give it to President, excuse me, Montrez. Let me Montrez, I'm sorry.
All right, Tim, you can stay back there, you don't have to.
I wanna see him up there.
I've had the bar you had up here. All right, we had three hundred and twelve requests through nine one one, two hundred and twenty-two transported, seventy-one percent. Pretty much staying right by where it's usually at. Eight minutes and thirty-four seconds in the city for ninety-two percent compliance, twelve minutes and forty-eight seconds in the county at ninety-six percent. Of note there is, the county volume went up, it almost doubled for the month for nine one one in the county. And just looking at the data, we're looking at an increase in trauma events, and January and February is not usual. Typically, we have more sick events. We're looking at trauma events that are occurring right now, and less sick events, so I don't know, that kinda flip-flop. We had an increase in our site calls. They, they went up by five times what they were last month. Twenty-six canceled prior to arrival, and then twelve, no patients found at all on the scene. Three medical flights, that's down by about forty-two percent. Last month, we had five. A hundred and ninety-two times that we had multiple calls occurring at the same time in the county. For a total of seven hundred and ninety-seven responses, all said and done, that's for nine one one, that's our county calls that come into our seven-digit files and everything else. Want to acknowledge two of our crew members that actually delivered a child in back of the truck. It's not an easy task, especially not moving around some of the roads and the curves that we have, so... Randall McKenzie and James Woods successfully delivered, arrived at the hospital. Both came out of the hospital fine, baby and mom, both, so I just wanna acknowledge them on that. We gave them some store pins, it's not a lot of them that pack store pins, that can get store pins. It's a limited number of us, so... Employee of the month was Darlene Hawkins. We migrate into a system right now that's kind of a redundancy for what we already do. The system absolutely prevents somebody from getting on a unit unlicensed or uncertified. Pretty nice branding systems. They can't, they, they won't be able to pop punch in, and they won't be able to be assigned and dispatched if they don't have certifications for what their ship assignment is. It's a huge process to get it in. Darlene took that over and did a really good job for us, so I just wanted to kinda give her acknowledgement on that. That's everything I had, unless the board had something for me.
Do you have a store pin?
I do.
Congratulations.
Times five. I'm actually the only guy that's ever delivered a... Times five. I'm actually the only guy that's ever delivered a child in the NACIS police office, so, in the deal, so.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, so I've done five of those, four down the road and one stationary at the police department.
You'll have your doctor in that one.
Let me just say, we don't carry gloves that go in here, we carry gloves that go here. You need gloves that go here because there's no way to get out of that one without.
That's a lot more than I would need in a.
Thank you.
All right, who's next?
Wait up.
Up here or back here?
If you can talk loud enough, you can talk.
All right.
We just, we've got two people on the phone and.
All right, got you. All right. Well, I'm here, I've got a cash request, cash request number four for the Adams County Home Grant through the Mid-City Home Corporation. It's for a car construction in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. And this is for Ms. Malia Pickett. He has removed her home and set a new pad. That's what this bill is for.
Okay, so this is the first installment or?
Oh, bad house, yes, yeah.
Okay. Is that paperwork I do not have and you're going to bring up here?
I got it right here. Yeah, I'll bring it to you.
Okay. All right. Need a motion? Move by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
And me and Warren talked about potentially a CBG grant or a DRA grant for that. Remind me, Warren, that area of town or the county?
Yeah.
Uh, which area is it?
That blue grass right out of the state, that where all that water flooded, those residents right there.
Okay.
If we looked at before.
You would ask me to look into it. This is my suggestion. I know we've gone around the DRA before and it didn't work out. CBG, they fund maybe one, out of all the, the public facility grants, they fund maybe one drainage project a year, the rest are all sewer and water. So, it's very difficult to get, so my suggestion is this, since it's such a large amount, break it up into two phases if you can and apply for a DRA Community Facilities Grant. That's my suggestion. What are your thoughts, Warren?
We, we still have the word, I, I mean, I go with the recommendation.
Okay.
You have a motion, Warren?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make that motion to apply for that grant in two days.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
That needs it real bad, so that would be really good for that area for sure. I know it's been, we've been out there a lot of times trying to do.
Well, with DRA, I can do it with no match.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any names?
Coming on hold.
Okay, do you have anything else on?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll bring you this.
I'll pass it down.
All right, Mr. Dahl?
Good morning, Warren. First of all, I have Mr. Ford back here, Vivri Ray and Magnolia Gloves. Had some warranty work to meet W P sites. Just asking him, you know, update the department or our office, whatever, we keep up with the warranty working around what's going on with those sites. I think Mr. Ford has something on the Magnolia Gloves site that he can bring up to discuss. It's, I think this is the third time that site's failed.
Yeah, the third one, they came, they came out a couple times.
Yeah, and fixed it, and it's failed again, and then the contractor.
He's wanting to see if they could, if we can do like a joint venture with the county. They need some rock on one slope, on one side of the slope if it's failing. The contractor was like, well, they'll, they'll still deliver the rock, plenty of paper, rock, they'll pick it up, deliver it, and it's all there, and no additional cost to the county. Because the dirt work they're doing is not standing, and so we're ready to move it, we put some good stuff, start a shoe up there.
Could I speak up?
Um.
Yeah, if y'all can.
Yeah, y'all probably need to move up here with, so who, who's the contractor?
Camo Construction.
They might need to put a foot in there.
Would they, that wasn't part of the original plan or what?
No, so, they, 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 they contracted it according to plans, but there's water now that's coming off of Magnolia Gloves and where the ditch is angled, instead of it falling, and then the ditch is hitting the slope now because it comes with so much velocity. And so, we had the slope and we weren't able to grade the slope properly because of the requested homeowner, property owner not to mess with that vertical bank. And so, with that, we weren't able to properly tie in, so now every time water comes down, it's hitting that slope and taking the material with it. We figured we can shore it up with some rip wrap, some good amount of rip wrap, get it to take care of that issue. Because now the water will have a place to go to and not take the material with it.
What was the date of the final inspection?
That would be January of twenty-three.
This is the third time they've been back on the same location.
They painted, fixed it.
They put some, busted concrete in, it busted up what they had in it, put in there, and it failed again back in January.
January issue. And so, it's, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars in the rip wrap material.
All right, y'all going to see me that as well?
No, it's just going to be loose rip wrap. We're not going to put any rip wrap on it.
But if this don't hold, what direction are we going to go?
Say that now.
If this don't hold, what are we going to do?
A little bit of the end, if it don't hold, I have to look at it at that point. Right now, it seems to be the best way, because like I said, the velocity is coming down and just taking the material with it, putting the rip wrap in the puddle, shift off the material from.
I mean, would it be beneficial to go ahead and put some global fill on top of that rip wrap?
So, the thing about putting global fill is material stays in place.
Right.
And so, if the roads are funded, it creates a void in there, we can't see into that.
Until it fails.
Loose rip wrap will allow it to sit down, to crunch through the dirt away.
Well, we've talked about it some of the times, going away from that and maybe put a pipe in instead of put a rip wrap and global fill.
What's your recommendation? Or what's your call?
I, I just, my thoughts are the money. Once we go in and pay the thirty-five hundred dollars, if it fails again, who they going to come to again? You know what I'm saying? I, I just, we're not, we're not even at practice of paying out what you're doing, you know, I, we haven't in the past, but I'm saying if we do this, then they're going to expect this more.
Are your feelings are they need to fix it on, on air done?
They've already fixed it a couple times and it's failed, but now they have to put any rip wrap in. They put some busted concrete in last time that they had somewhere and they believed it, but it didn't stay. And that's why I'm worried, rip wrap is a good thing.
This gentleman in back, does he have something to do with this?
Not nothing.
No, I've got a suggestion. Have they ever put a foot around and why the water won't run up on it?
He can't, he can't talk without being recognized, he has to.
I will, if you say no.
You want to, oh, so we, you, you can, you can talk when, whatever you're here for, but they got to make this decision because this is county money.
Yeah, they've been waiting to. Can I make that?
I'm not, you know, it's your home. What, what do you suggest we do?
Thirty-five hundred dollars is, might sell out of one, but if we can fix it, we need to move forward. So, if it doesn't fix it out, I feel like we need to pay more. What's that been my recommendation, you know, this Ford, am I thinking right?
They want it.
They even want us to help fix it.
They want it a year from the time they go back and do it now, they get finished, and Mr. Ford will say, I will get it, and it's supposed to be another year from that day.
Yeah. They're on board with that?
They are, it's in their contract.
I'm just making sure that.
Yeah, it's in their contract, yeah.
Um, so, we're going to have to buy the rock, they're going to transport it and install it.
Yes.
And you can say it's roughly about thirty-five hundred.
Can we use that other?
Can.
They put some of that in, like, not that, but something, they put some busted concrete slats.
It's lost under.
So, if this is their recommendation, maybe.
I don't know.
I mean, this, if this fixes it, then even though we're good, it's out, even though they're supposed to continue fixing it, at some point, they're not going to exist anymore, and then it'll fail at that point. So, if this fixes it and the rest is, then that's a good thing for the county.
All right, so we need a motion? Move by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any more discussion?
County Road.
Oh, Magnolia Gloves.
Next one I have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carries.
Conway Drive. Had a resident by a piece of property here all the way to the end, or got a piece of property, we blacktopped it twenty-twenty-three. We stopped the blacktop, original blacktop stop, but he cleared up a lot beyond that for a mobile home. Now, he's wanting that blacktop, you know, we blacktopped where the original blacktop stopped twenty-three, so. I would tell him, you know, Ford and things like that can't get a lot. I think Ford should, you know, go to the courthouse to see what that is, but I don't know. Home for City, County Blacktop, I mean, I, I just tried to explain that to him, I put my brain through Ford. So, you know, give him a full commission to see the links and this, which we got it on our road register, but I'm saying, I guess, to go to the courthouse to make sure we're locked.
For Conway?
Yes, Conway.
Has a vote on that.
County.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat for modest fan?
They're talking about, somebody wants us to blacktop part of the road on Conway because they've cleared some land and put a mobile home there. And I'm trying to figure, you talking about the end where Cawthon lives?
This is, I'll go there, that.
Oh, Cawthon.
Over there where Charlie Palmer. And my parents, Mr. Palmer, on the right. Think about two racers in there, Kim and her, somebody, and he cleared it up, put a mobile home.
I might be up there, I got something I need to do. I'll get with you. But yeah, in the meantime, yeah, if you'll look at that, I know what you're talking about.
And I know y'all got the email on February twenty-fifth, Cawthon's point on Burke Lake, where they've plugged you to have water. Got it, Mr. Bradford, we put it out, so we sent an email to everybody who's wanted that out. The fire hydrant on Southview, we've already spoke about it. President Wilson, you have a solid waste grant for fifteen thousand, seven, fifty-seven, sixty-one.
Yeah. All right, we need to make a motion to put this in minutes. Got solid waste grant. Indeed, Q. All right, need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names? Motion carries.
We have a waste grant, to President Wilson, one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Fourteen hundred and fifty-two.
Yeah, one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two, waste grant.
So, move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Milton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Next one I have, Jarekis Johnson, his six-month probation period is up, thirteen fifty to fourteen fifty shared. We have to focus work.
Jarekis Earl Johnson. All right. Hour eight, fourteen fifty, annual thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Move by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
I have a budget amendment for five hundred dollars coming from one six 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 three six. That's from breeze lumber to one six six three seven to bridge piles for five hundred.
So, all right, need a motion. Got one by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
And on thirty-three, piles, what we have failing on approach, we did have a pile order, that's where they're going to move some money around to rebuild that one, to get the piles all in. Bill Jones does have our yearly build on piles. So, we did that bridge fix, and the piles. Mr. Slover, the dirt gravel pit, where are we at with that? I know we approved it to do it, but the name's not here, it's still a word value. How is your fault, are we going in the right direction or not?
We're going to get a second quote from, see the bill just sent us a letter with the second, same phrase? Always do is say, this is, you know, my bid. They just need a second, we'll put them in the quote.
So, I didn't request that, you didn't request that?
You want me to call them?
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, pretty quick, the tree in Eldon, we discussed it. And me and Ms. Lewis spoke earlier before the meeting about the contractors on the county rideaway coming in, they got lots of subs and doing a lot of work, and like I said, Mr. Wilson brought them up this morning, and the grains doing boring. Like she said, she put thirty-seven, she's had like one or two permits pools since we started this, and we need another way of getting it out of that avenue, trying to get to the public of what they need to do to come up with the county work. And I know y'all give us permission to shut them down if we see them. I'm going to the grains to check on that this afternoon. If they're out there, I'm going to shut them down.
Go ahead. Can you get a list of subs, you know, maybe ten, twelve, whatever it is that you see the most of? Get it to Scott, but send a letter to them, get the word out that here's the deal now, okay?
Okay.
And I mean, unfortunately, we're going to have to make an example out of somebody to work and spread. We, we've been talking about this for two years now, you know, I know we paid some roads in two or three, and day after day I follow up and they cut it wide and, and, you know. Somebody's got to.
Just reach out to our water, gas, the local people and see who their subs are from them. I'll email them, try to get a list of all their subs that work for them, and then we can send that out.
And send them a copy of the ordinance and the permit application.
Okay, but I would recap our locals, if they're so.
That's, that's what I was going to say. Seem like your local will be a major partner because they sub contract the work out. So, we need to definitely touch to the people who sub it out and get them to notice and let them know. And that way, I think that'll cut a lot of work down on you and a lot of work down on Scott. The people who subbing the work out need to be contacted and have a copy of the permit and the rules that they have. And that way, when they do, we have, we can hold them liable for not pushing the information out to the people that they have because they're, they have been made aware of it.
Just tell them to jive.
Yeah.
Those may, mainly Admises subs and.
Admises, you got the AT and T.
Whoever from Fire Products.
Correct. And, and like, so we have trouble coming back. I know Mr. Gray, we mentioned time after time, will print submission. Cemetery Road, we've been out from, been out, I've sent emails, I've phoned calls. The guys on local level, yeah, we're going to have them come back, and then they don't ever show back up. And then they're coming and putting them within the ditch and the bottom of the ditch is where we can clean the ditch, and they did that on Cedar Lane.
So, the fines come back to the people that hired the subs in, is the way that would work, wouldn't it? So, if we, we notified those particular companies, the major corporations, that if they're hiring subs and they don't do what they're supposed to, I mean, they, they need to police their own.
I'm pretty sure the ordinance is on the utility companies, not on the contractors, so. I think it's done like that on purpose. I'm pulling it up to confirm.
It needs to be a pretty hefty fine, like, the only way you're going to make these people understand is to.
Auto pick the.
Make them pay. No. No, it needs to be like about ten thousand off.
It says any and all rightways of public property which are altered, disturbed, or damaged during the construction, repair, replacement, relocation, operation, maintenance, and expansion, extension, or reconstruction. Of any utility system shall be promptly and fully restored by the utility at its sole expense.
Yeah, that's why we did it.
That's all I had.
Cause they're permanent and the contract subs may be gone.
Park Road, we went out this past week, uh, went back, put some drains on those back right away marks where I just spoke before, we might know. Uh, we're gonna start, see what the storm does tomorrow. After that, we'll fix and move the fence and, uh, uh, get it back on that part, and we're gonna start cleaning and, uh, be ready for, uh, Mr. Bill to set the bridge.
Thank you.
Uh, right now, I got, uh. Emerald Road, um, I got a car, uh, tech, I think Sam Lee is aware of it. Uh, kind of the same thing, uh, that I seen, that we seen, uh, out on Stan Park the other day, coming down to the bridge. I think that water has been running, so I know that we can do to after the storm, we go look at right on Stan Park when we get to the bridge. Uh, right on the left, right there, the road is here, and it's, uh, foot, probably a foot and a half, almost deep, and it probably be deeper than that. So if a car leave the road, it don't have any ditches going straight there, and I think we got the same problem on Emerald Mall. So we definitely need to probably try to address them, but it's not gonna do any good to put anything in today. But, uh, we definitely need to address them, and I'll be moving around and, um, getting a few more and.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think, uh, um. I said, it's, it's a few more other small minor thing, but what I'll do, that's just, those two are the major things that came. I, I'll make a list and I'll say after the storm, I, I, I'll come back off and I'll get with you, and we'll look at some of those other things. But make sure that, uh, I know the storm home I came through looked pretty good, but, uh, that seven-year-old fellow with the cancer right there. Uh, let him make sure that his, his ditch is clean, cause I would hate to see him back out there again with, uh, hay falling and rake trying to get it out in the storm this time.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna ask for the road department's help on something. Here lately, I've been dealing with some more trailers, eighteen-wheeler trailers parked on, literally on the side of the road. Um, I've been talking to Mr. Daughtry and Sheriff Patton, they have helped from that, I mean, you know, they gotta go out, they gotta tag them. And the concern this person had was not that the, that it was parked on the side of the road, it was that it was parked, I mean, literally. And if somebody has to get over, it's not gonna be good. It's done. I mean, they're, they're dead. I hate to say they're dead. Um, so, if y'all would, if you're out and you see some, and ask your guys if they could just text a picture to you or Meg or whoever. And get it to them so somebody can tag it, because what's the process, Shane? It has to be. You know what I'm saying? So they've helped me, I'm not, I mean, but I can't be everywhere at one time, but while y'all are out throughout the county, if y'all see some, I would greatly appreciate it. Providence has been bad lately.
And while we're on that subject, uh, Lincoln Heights, uh, Shane?
Yes, sir.
There's eighteen-wheeler, been parked there for ten years, tractor trailer and, and the trailer are different, they're separated, so they've been, they've just been sitting there on, on our right away for, forever, and there's a bunch of other cars. You, you can't even hardly get down that road, and there's school buses go down the road, so.
Lincoln Heights?
Lincoln Heights, yeah, uh, we're after tag those vehicles. I don't know how they ever got the payment down last time, uh, last year, uh, with, with all that mess out there.
We couldn't get a move, we didn't know who to locate them.
Can we just?
They're gonna be.
Can we tow them off, or we? I mean.
Once they're tagged and it's gone fast, the time, then yes, sir, we.
Where would we put, where would we put them?
It's, it goes to the tow company, the tow company holds it, and then it's there with the tow company.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Back on the ordinance violation, what I'm gonna do, I asked Robbie and Meg to get me a couple of those subs that never came back, go ahead and leave those utility companies. And I'll go ahead and send them the seven-day notice saying, this has got to be fixed within seven days, or here's what the ordinance provides, and I might be able, go ahead and get their attention. If we've already got problems with boring, that's, that's gone.
So if we have to fix it, we can charge it back to the utility company?
After seven days notice. Unless they get, there's a penalty for it and everything, so it's per, it's per day.
We just have to start doing that, because they're just really taking advantage.
I think that's a good way to get their attention on it.
You can do that in Rankin County, you can have a grass plate out of place, and you're gonna get fined, or you're, they're not gonna approve it until such done.
People do, it'll be a while.
Thank you.
But you know, you and Meg, okay, Robbie? That's what I'm saying, yeah. And then if you give me the rest of the subs?
I will.
We'll send them to just, hey, here's educational.
Angela, did you or Ricky have anything for Robbie?
Do not.
Okay, um, Robbie, I hope that they find us some money and do something with Liberty Road. This, the side, they just, every time I go out there, I drive kind of fast, but. When you got twelve-inch drop-offs on the edge of the road, I mean, right on the edge of the road, it's a, a smaller car.
You can talk about water, we're now hitting them shoulders and cutting the shoulders away from the road, and we go back in, put the gravel in, and it just washes it up like that. Figure out some other way, maybe sixteen or something that's gonna set up a little more of a gravel.
Okay, thank you.
President.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Can, can we use some state money for Liberty Road?
Yeah, that was something I was gonna ask him, and, and kind of forgot about it, but that and on Kingston Road, because they're, both of them are so bad about that, they are the, uh. People drive really fast and, uh, one mistake, then somebody's gonna get hurt bad. Uh, yeah, he, he mentioned the other day that we needed to use our state aid money.
Right.
And, and those are probably our two of our biggest roads, uh, that are on state aid that need some serious attention.
Providence is a.
Yeah, I've heard a lot about Providence as well, um, yes, ma'am.
Uh, President Wilson, Robbie, uh, why I thought about that in Georgia is that, uh, after the weather, the spring is gonna break. We definitely need to get back to Morgantown Road. Uh, Mr. Thomas Smith, who's been here, that's been fighting, I mean, trying to, the war comes across, all of them have the same problem. Uh, Mr. Ben Udema that came in, and also that Church of God of Jesus Christ. So we need to actually kind of go set a date after the weather, and we need to kind of get out there, because Mr. Udema called, I mean.
He's been working on it, he's been doing some work down there himself.
And he called me after the meeting and said that he need to come back, and I told him that we're definitely on this meeting, that we will get a date, and we need, we need to at least go look, and, uh, Thomas Smith has been. You know, it's been a while, so we need, we need to. When the weather drives, we need, we need to take care of that. We'll get it together. So, that's between here and the, I know it's spring break coming up, and I mean, people might be out, but we'll be here. So on the Thursday, that's, um, if, if y'all would get together a date that, uh, you can come, Mr. Ford, Mr. Dollar is available. And just, uh, just email me in that, and I'll try to make sure that I can make it work. Uh, cause you know, unless it's something that I can always kind of stop what I'm doing, uh, I'll kind of work around it. So I can schedule my work around what I'm doing if I need to meet y'all.
Uh. Robbie, do you, uh, can you tell us what we need to do on the, the different state aid roads, and how much money we need to spend on each road?
We, uh, we rode three weeks ago, so Mr. Chris ought to be sending out a report.
You already got it.
Sorry, report. He sent it, when did he send it to you?
Uh, last Monday.
Okay, so yeah, they got it, so I get it from them, then we go over, what I normally do is send it to the foreman, then there is. But if it's stuff over beyond what we can do in-house, like, you know, striften or their recommendation or overlays or whatever, uh, put that together.
None, the, the state aid money, it doesn't expire, does it?
State money, yeah.
Okay. Uh, we, we just, we just need to fix some of our roads, where, I've got the four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars carved out for Liberty Road, I don't know. Uh, Lieutenant Governor's gonna give us any money for that or not, but, but we can do part of that road, and we can add some state aid money to it, and, and, uh. Obviously, uh, Liberty Road is a pretty bad problem too, and Providence, and I'm sure Mr. Gaines has it, but we just got to figure out where we're gonna spend that money, uh, and get it, get something moving. All right, anybody else have anything? All right, Robbie, thank you. Who's next?
Alex. As long as I have anything, I just provide the contract for Morgantown Road, page one, it's a stock, please review. Uh, and that's pretty much all I have. The EWP has all been designed and approved by NRC, so. Once we get a right away form, we can advertise, and that's for, uh, the Ohio, Ohioated Ford site, the Kingston Road site, Dunbar site, uh, Carthage Point, and Keweenaw, and Keaton, they've all been designed, just waiting on.
Waiting on me.
I don't know, probably all this.
But, uh. We reached out probably, uh, took forty percent of them, so I'm not a guy, we're trying, they also make some, but that, not yet, so. But I may be asking y'all if you know so-and-so or whatever, and that's what it's about.
Okay.
And that's all I have, if there's a question for me, I'll be having all yours.
Anybody got any questions, Mr. Ford? Appreciate it, yeah, thank you. We're doing the departmental head reports, it has to be, it has to be a county department head.
Public comments is when you.
And just, and just one minute, once we got another department, sheriff department, and then we'll get a chance for you to speak, you can speak on the public comments, Mr. Ben.
All right, thank you, thank you.
I sing the prayer right there.
Right here, I don't worry.
Oh, yeah.
Well, he, he's not a department either.
He is, yeah, so is you.
One board, I just have one thing, um, Terry's truck, last board meeting y'all agreed for approved, uh, purchase of a twenty-five hundred, two thousand twenty-five dollars truck. Uh, Enterprise came back and found a thirty-five hundred dollar, thirty-five hundred below state bid, which state bid is forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-six. Enterprise came back with a bid of forty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars, so it's twenty-three dollars cheaper than the state bid. This is a thirty-five hundred, which is what he originally had, and which is what we wanted to go with, um, the name just wasn't able to define one. We do have the quote now, and it's below the state bid, and we asked if we could get the thirty-five hundred as opposed to the twenty-five.
Do you have the bid for the twenty-five hundred too? At Yorga?
Yes, but no.
Oh, that's fine. You can mail it to you.
It, it was state bid, it was state, it was state contract.
Mr., Mr., uh. Uh, we, I, we don't have a problem with that, but the only problem this creates is when you do that, it has to go through purchasing first. And purchasing need those, that's the same problem that we have with the road department with Mr. Dollar, uh, with the gravel and dirt. So even if we approve, she gonna need those two bids and make sure they're comparable, and even if you approve them, what she calls state aid. So it, it, it's just really good that, I mean, I'm definitely go for, I say this, I, I don't have a problem, cause you going a little cheaper. But it's when it get inconsistent, cause you get a quote this day and get a quote that day, and then they all off. So if y'all would, make sure that, and, and, uh, what I'm gonna probably ask, and this ain't just for, uh. Cause y'all be here all the time, y'all do be here, y'all stay here, but what I'm gonna ask for some of our department heads, when they come in and give a report. Would they kind of stay through a little more, because we are going through our meeting, everybody leave, and then, uh, well, we didn't, we approved it. And then you got to go back through the bids and go back through the bids, all I'm saying to you, that your part is, make sure y'all, and when she's not here now, make sure when you bring it to us. Then I already got with the name, and she being included with the state audit, and that'll make y'all process faster and easier.
That's why I'm here. It's, this was done with the name, and she has to pilot for you.
Okay.
That, yes, this is, they're done with the name the entire time.
And if I'm not mistaken, the truck we approved is no longer vacant.
That's correct.
That's right.
So we.
Yes, I, we're not doing any.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the thirty-five hundred, it's a little cheaper than the twenty-five hundred, which is much better.
No, no, sir, let me clarify, it's cheaper than state bid. It is a little more expensive than the twenty-five hundred, but it is still below state bid. And thirty-five hundred is what we had originally, and we were asking to get, but just because of the total capacity. And kind of work that, uh, Terry does.
And how much difference in price between twenty-five and thirty-five?
Several hundred dollars. It's not in the thousands, it's several hundred dollars, because we went with a gas as opposed to a diesel.
Okay, so we need a motion to. To approve the, uh, the swap on that.
So.
Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any names? Motion carry.
That's all I had, if y'all have any questions.
What is that truck he's driving right now?
That is an M dot truck that we got from Brookhaven, given to us with three hundred and eighty-two thousand miles. That's the only thing we have to put him in, and, and, all, all that, 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 the, the boat trailers, the mowers, and, you know, because those mowers are diesels, so they're.
They're heavy.
Yes, sir, so that's a one.
Some people don't have a use for that truck.
We will still keep it, yes, sir. I was actually gonna be, uh, yes, sir, it had a use for it, but we had to repurpose it to Terry right now.
Okay, anybody got anything for, uh, Mr. Daughtry? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more department heads? Mr. Parker. She like precipitating it, would you, would you come up here, please?
I love, I love you because I always feel uncomfortable, but thinking I'm yelling or speaking too loud. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, what I'm gonna show you today, I have a final, a couple of final, uh, questions for the health insurance. And, uh, at the very last minute Friday, I got the best dental quote I've gotten yet, which I'll go over that, I'll say. If y'all would pull these out, I, uh, I thought it'd be, uh, helpful if I went back to twenty twenty-one. And showed y'all what's been going on with the county self-insurance and costs. What you see here, the blue bar record, uh, represents the fixed rate of the reinsurance. For twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. The orange bar represents the amount of the lasers that were in each contract for each of those years. And the green bar represents the fixed cost of the reinsurance plus what the max expenditures would have been had you hit all the lasers. In other words, it shows you the fixed cost of the insurance and the laser exposure combined. So in twenty twenty-one, the fixed cost of the insurance was seven hundred forty thousand nine ninety-five. The lasers were one million one hundred eighty-five thousand. Uh, for a total of one million nine hundred twenty-five thousand nine ninety-five. In twenty twenty-two, the cost of the reinsurance came down to six eighty-eight nine ninety-two, the lasers came down to eight forty. For an exposure amount of those two items of one million five hundred twenty-eight thousand. In twenty twenty-three, the reinsurance was seven fifty-one six ninety-six. Again, the same, uh, I think the same folks were laser at the same amount that year, eight hundred and forty. Now, around in there is when the Samaritan Fund came into play, and we started being able to, uh. And at the same time, the, the Samaritan Fund came into play, we also had some new really extreme, extreme claims, which are still represented. In this policy year, although the main one has been moved off effective January first. And so in twenty twenty-three, yeah, I went over that. So the, it's main, the two combined in twenty-three was one million five ninety-one six ninety-six. In twenty twenty-four, the. In twenty-twenty-four, the fixed cost of the reinsurance was six hundred and seventy-two thousand, one twenty-two. The lasers popped back up to one million, one hundred and sixty thousand for a total of one point eight three two, one forty-two. Now, the first reinsurance quote I got in the unit degree was eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. I went in and renegotiated some stuff and got that down to eight eighteen. The lasers have dropped to four hundred and seventy thousand, which is a dramatic, it's a third, about a third of what it was in twenty-twenty-one. For exposure there, one point two eight eight million. So, in short, right now, the quote I have on the reinsurance of a fifty thousand dollars spec deductible is eight hundred and eighteen thousand. Now, when I go back to twenty-twenty-one, it's amazing to me, when, when I put this and could look at it like this, how the reinsurance cost has fluctuated. And in today's environment, one would expect that to just go up a minimum of seven percent a year. That's just about the, uh, the cost of inflation or medical coverage these days. Now, I also, it, it, it was at the last minute. I got unit degree, Mr., uh, cost to quote a seventy-five thousand dollars spec deductible and see what that would do. That would bring the fixed cost of the reinsurance down to six hundred and seventy-seven, four twenty-eight. You don't see that on this because this was a last-minute deal that I got them to do. I will say, uh, of course, that's a, that's a nice decrease from the eight eighteen. However, as a seventy-five thousand spec deductible, that if you hit two new spec deductibles, that would eat up that hundred and forty-one thousand dollars savings. And, uh, with the claims history that's been going on, it's six one half dozen of the other, almost. However, I just feel safer with a fifty thousand dollars spec and knowing what your cost or closer than taking on another twenty-five thousand dollar spec insurance per two hundred something employees. Now, and I, by the way, I, Mr. Supervisor Gray and Supervisor Hutchins, I did not know you would be here, but I did send you this, uh, text you this chart on your telephones.
So about the break is not on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. But, uh, at any rate, and, and another thing I think this shows is the, uh, when you're working with the same people every year, and, and from my end of the story, and I think in terms of accounting, when you're working with the same people every year, they're more apt to negotiate, give you better deals than hopping and skipping and jumping. And I think this, uh, really shows that. Because to go, I mean, the claims we've had to go from seven forty down to six eighty-eight, up to seven fifty-one, down to six seventy-two. Now, the eight eighteen, why, why, why that jump? In this policy year from October one through January thirty-one, which is the most recent reinsurance monitoring report I could pull on one person that is now coming off over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars paid out. And in that, the, the, uh, report I gave y'all a couple of weeks ago, it showed, it gave the check balance, I mean, the check register from unit degree showing that four hundred and fifty-three thousand had been returned to the county. They had six hundred thousand in reserve because they were looking at another, three, four hundred thousand come there, which, again, that would be returned to the county. But anyway, this is what we have at this point, and it's...
Did you see the Chuckie?
What?
The list of that, of the paybacks that we're supposed to have?
I don't know that she does. I, you know, I got mine from, from Jules, the actual check register which I showed.
Can you shoot that to Chuckie and copy me?
Okay, I agree with you on, if, if you went up to the seventy-five thousand deductible, you'd save a little bit of money, but just two people would wipe it out, right? And, and then, and average for one hundred participants, you might have three or four.
On average, maybe you're gonna have a hitcher.
We've been, we've been having five or six.
Yeah, for sure.
So, so we, we don't, we need, we need to stay with that. And I, I appreciate you kind of giving us all these numbers and laying them out for us. And once again, I'm gonna reiterate about the fact that I can call you or go by your office at any time. And I mean, most anybody that's on these policies that you represent for us can do the same thing. And I, I like hometown service and...
Is your, is your fixed cost?
Is the Samaritan fees part of the fixed cost?
No, no, that's, that's separate.
It's another two hundred and ten on top of it?
Well...
We, we still got one or two that need to go on that, or just, that's...
Well, we, we have, we have one person who, uh, we had a meeting with, and I've checked back with HR a couple of times, and there's been no response in this person. And I understand, uh, people are afraid of change, especially when they're about to undergo a serious surgery, and that's what's happening. And my hope is, and I believe, pardon me, from all I can ascertain, and as y'all understand, through the HIPAA, et cetera, ad nauseam, my conversations with these employees, I have to be extremely careful. And, and, uh, and Sharon knows that she's in the same boat. However, uh, we did in that meeting have another person that is on the fund come in and say, "It's great, it's great," but still, there's that fear.
They were reluctant, too, when they first started matter. Seeing its praises. And everyone that we've talked to says that this is a good deal for your employees, most of all.
And I'll have to say this, too. Jules LaCoste, which I tried to get him down here, he, it's probably been three, four years since he's come from Atlanta to meet with you. He's got two new grandbabies and a lot going on, and, uh, him flying in from Atlanta is hard to get him to do. However, um, he is, he brought this to us, and he explained it to me. And, uh, not many people are aware of this, not many people use it. And it is growing because obviously it's invaluable. Uh, when you stop and think, if these four people we have on the fund right now, if they had not had that avenue, we're looking at it, three million more over the past four years in, in claims. And that would drive this, uh, the fixed cost and exposure to much, incredibly high lasers. So at any rate, I, I would ask that we could vote on this, um, today. Uh, open enrollment is the thirteenth and fourteenth. And, uh, I'd like to get these done and put to bed, and the employees know that they've got, still got Blue Cross, and they still have a, um, an advocate on their side on Homochidus Street. I'd like to make one note. I had an employee contact me a week and a half ago with the bill, and there's a, I'm not patting myself on the back, there is a point to this. A, brought me a bill from a hospital across the river for three thousand, seven hundred dollars. And I went in, I pulled up the fellows' claims, the facility fee from this hospital was about a little over four grand. Blue Cross allowed six hundred and eighty dollars. There was a fee from an emergency room doctor that was a couple of grand, I think, a gr, a little over a grand, a hundred and sixty-two dollars. Then there's another fee for a radiologist who is not in and of the hospital. And if, if this person had gone to the emergency room in Mississippi due to our whole harmless act, the five hundred dollars they're trying to charge him, he wouldn't have had to pay. Because, uh, they did not provide a medical documentation. Uh, and I've said this before, if, if Mr. Gaines has a rec, he's gonna have to take a police report to his insurance company. And I use that as an analogy, that you have to, when providers send in a bill to the insurance company, a claim, there has to be medical assessment. Now, do I believe that, that every time they ask for more records, that that's, I don't think they're trying to get out of a claim, but obviously, if you go somewhere and have an X-ray, a radiologist has to read it. You know, the emergency room doctor can't read that X-ray. Uh, and, but again, I'm working on this, so, uh, a bill this person's getting for thirty-seven hundred dollars, when all is said and done, it should be knocked down to about eight. And my point I'm trying to make here is two-fold. Number one, if you go to Mississippi, now, we can go anywhere. Paige, if you went to your doctor and he said, "Paige, I got bad news," and blah, blah, blah. You can go to Indy Anderson, Birmingham Park, it doesn't matter. You can go anywhere you want in the United States. However, Mississippi has a whole harmless law, and when you have a claim that is not medically justified in the state of Mississippi, and they don't provide that justification, you as the employee do not have to pay it, and can't be, you can't go to collections. You can't, can't do any of that. So anyway, that's, that's my story. I'm sticking to it. So, uh...
All right. Uh, thank you. Yes, go ahead, uh, Ms. Angel.
What's it? Um, Mr. Parker, I, I know you actually thought to do it today, but I think we have another meeting in March. Um, and Supervisor Gray is not present in this meeting. So with a decision like this, I would like to wait for all board members present. Let me make the decision.
I don't think, uh, Wes or myself will be at the next meeting, the spring break. Isn't it? On the fourteenth, uh, seventeen, I think. I know I won't be here.
I'll be here on September.
Okay, can you call in?
Uh, no, I'm gonna be in South Africa.
Yeah, I just, I just like to have all board members present and stuff. Now, we made decisions on, uh, certain things, we always said we'll have all board members present.
Oh, when's the enrollment coming up, uh, Mr. Parker?
March thirteenth and fourteenth, and uh, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, uh, is, they've called me twice saying, "When can we get these?" You know, because these contracts, you can't put them out overnight. That's all I'm gonna say, and of course, I'm at the, uh, play for the board.
Okay, enrollment is coming up on the thirteenth and fourteenth. And there's nothing we can do anyway until the after enrollment is over with to make any changes down near the payroll. So it wouldn't be too late in order to get, uh, any decisions.
Are, are you, are you asking us to, uh, go ahead and prove the, the contract? Is that what you're trying to?
Yes, due to the nature of the fact that these contracts, uh, Blue Cross and typically wants the approval of whether this was a municipality or a ABC corporation thirty days out. But, you know, again...
I don't wanna take a tran, chance with, uh, everybody's, um, insurance, and the, the situation's gonna be no different the next time, because we're gonna be a board member short next time, too, at least one member. Um, I don't see why we couldn't make a motion and see, see where it goes, um, and...
I mean, they may approve, but I, I can't approve that I let all board members, uh, present.
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be, we, we wouldn't be able to do it till the middle of April then.
April seventh. When are you leaving?
Okay, we can, we can probably be before then.
Oh. Right.
Before then.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and prove it, and...
Can we go in Thursday like we were going to do? And, because we probably have a couple issues. That, we was originally, well, we definitely gonna have one meeting Thursday, because you might have, would have went.
That's right.
And if, can everybody just since, everybody, because that's what a lot of things said, and, and this week, would you be available for a call in Thursday? Because, and that way we can all have a...
You talking about the city?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we have...
Just call, you can call it, it ain't always...
I, I really don't understand what's gonna change when you, you... Are you against the...
I'm not against insurance at all.
No, I'm not against it. I'm not against it, but I'd just like to have everybody, uh, voting there.
I don't think we're against it. That is good.
Makes no sense not, makes no sense not to vote on it then.
Okay.
I just want we make a decision.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and prove, prove it to get it out of the way. Um, so that's the motion to approve the...
Contract.
Contract. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Discussion. All in favor? All right.
May. May.
All right, I got three yeses and one nay. Motion approved.
Is that the, you voted nay?
No, he voted yes. Yes, sir.
Uh, if I may, and Supervisor Hutchins, I certainly understand your standpoint, uh...
I guess with someone like this come up again, and everybody not present, I don't wanna hear. We're gonna wait all board members for present.
Um, yes, ma'am.
This is a pretty big deal for the county. And we've been using the same people for fifteen years.
Oh, you, you didn't agree.
I just didn't, I don't understand why we would even be concerned about it. But, uh, okay, are, is that all you need?
No, sir, if I may, I'd like to move on to the dental.
Okay.
Uh, I have, uh, asked for quotes from seven of the largest dental carriers in the United States. Uh, Humen being one of them, since we've used them before. They came back and their rates were twenty-two percent higher than the renewal from United Healthcare. I asked for rates from the principal. They came back and said, "Well, we can meet the rates, but we'll reduce your benefits by two hundred and fifty dollars a year." And I was just not getting any, any headwinds there at all. And the reason is, the increase, as we all know, when we go to the dentist, the, the rates are going through the roof for cleaning, uh, anything you do. Uh, however, uh, dealing with the largest broker in New Orleans, in probably the state of Louisiana, I received a quote Friday from Humena. And, uh, we have currently one hundred and thirty-one employee-only people on the dental plan. The rate, and offering a two-year rate guarantee. Uh, the rate for an employee is going to, would be thirty-one dollars and sixteen cents, which is only two dollars over the lowest it's ever been. Uh, employee and spouse, sixty-two thirty-one, which is, uh, three dollars lower than the renewal from United Healthcare. The only challenge I have, and I, I just don't see a way around it... The only challenge I have, and I just don't see a way around it, is employee and child is going up. Now, there are thirteen people that have employee and child, and versus a hundred and thirty-one employee only. Employee and child is going up seven dollars to eighty-three, eighty-five. Employee and family is going up five dollars from the UHC renewal to one twenty-four, forty-nine. So it, what it boils down to, you have one to, twenty-nine people where their rates will increase, and a hundred forty-two where the rates will decrease. With the same coverage that we've had for the last five years. And that was the best quote I could get from, I've asked for quotes from ten different huge carriers, so. That would be, the Humana contract would be the one that I recommend.
Humana.
And it's a two-year rate guarantee, which is harder and harder to get these days.
Okay. I need a motion if we want to accept the Humana policy for dental.
I missed the first part of it. I missed the first part of it, so you changing, are you changing?
Providers. Yes, sir, from United Healthcare, we got a big rate increase from United Healthcare. And I did have a couple, not many, I mean, I think, I'm not gonna sit here and tell this board that with health insurance or dental insurance, you're not gonna run into problems somewhere. And hopefully, as an agent with the company can resolve any problems we encounter. However, another big thing, you know that these employees, like every other employee on the planet, want a card in their hand. They wanna say, "Here's my demo card." United Healthcare, the current carrier, you don't use a card. Whereas with Humana, everybody would get their demo card. And again, Mr. Gaines, we are lowering for a hundred and forty-two people the cost down to where it hadn't been in three or four years.
If we get the other.
The individual, I don't know if you got the right, was thirty-one sixteen? And individual with a spouse is just sixty-two thirty-one?
It went up, well, and with a child.
One child, eighty-three, eighty-five. And in a family, one twenty-four, forty-nine. Now, when you have children involved, and when I, you know, you're, a lot of times you're gonna have, and this does have a childhood orthodoty. You're gonna have higher claims there, and when you have a family, you're gonna have higher claims. But I had to look at it from a standpoint of numbers. How many people that work for the county can we reduce their rates? And a hundred forty-two versus thirty is the best I can do.
Seventy percent of the people are gonna have a lower cost. All right, so I need a motion to accept the Humana Dental Care. Moved by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And are you gonna be in town tomorrow?
Yes.
If we get the other person joining the Samaritan program, is that gonna?
It's down to the bone, I, I don't know if we'll be able to do it, but I will keep in contact with her and see what we can do.
If there's some way we can help you just?
Yes, sir.
Let us know. Okay, any more departmental reports? Any public comments? Public comments? Anybody, nobody?
Rob, I think I know why you, yeah. Now, you, you, I know you're not gonna hear this.
I'll be right back.
I'm on Covington Road, it's here, good. We, he, I seen him at the store Friday, he bought a house on Magnolia in Broadmoor. And I think that's what he want. It's, I don't know exactly where it is, he kinda described like Millaway. And what I think, when it grinds, the water's coming off the street. But I, I, I think it's, he bought one of those lots, that the house is lower than the elevation of the street. And you know, he dealt with a lot of that. I think the water's running down here in his yard. Now, that's what he told me at the store Friday, I seen him. I don't know, I don't make me, I don't know what day, but I did see him. And I told him to look at it, and he said he might come to the board meeting. So I'm pretty much sure that's what he want. He's not on Covington, what is that over there? Fallsham out? What is it?
Coventry.
Coventry? Where it had one of the, you know, he used to stay over there. Now he's in Broadmoor and Magnolia, and he said the water's coming off, so. We'll go look at it. I'm not sure, I didn't get his address. I think, I think, I'm, I'm just going on a while, they're gonna say that's what he wanted. And we'll, we'll, we'll go look at, I don't exactly know exactly, I'm not sure. I don't have an address, but I do know it's on Magnolia. And he said he lived behind, beside Paul Scott, so I know Paul Scott's here. So I, maybe we can figure it out.
Right. Guess we'll come to the title. Supervisor Hutchins? You should hang up.
You doing the departmental report?
We already did those.
I, I mean. Okay, all right, let's go. I'm gonna turn.
Come for the title.
I'll be right back. Go ahead.
Angela is not on, so we'll come to.
I don't have one to do.
Mr. Gaines?
I'll do what you want.
I don't have anything to report. Ms. Dean?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Love?
I just have a couple things. Need to have the.
Wait a minute.
We can't do anything.
We can't do anything, we don't have pretty. Okay, mine can wait.
Figure it out, we'll wait.
Okay.
Just need to have the mail tracking report for the Adams County Sheriff's Office for February to spread across the minutes, please.
All right, need a motion? Moved by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
The March Bonds also need to be spread across the minutes for Alice Jones and Denise Price.
Moved by Mr. Middleton. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
And the last thing I have is just approval to use DIP code data again for our mailouts for tax remission. There's a changing cost, and that cost is passed on to the property owners.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Slower?
Dante had an AT&amp;T contract for nine-one-one, he was asking for approval. It requires electronic signature, so what we need to do is prove that, print out that contract, and have that on minutes, but then you go on there and click, "E-sign."
Yes. All right. Need a motion? Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
And then I have a couple items to be determined.
Okay. Ms. Washington?
I have a ICE detention modification, they're needing a signature for fifteen A, B, and C. They just had a performance extension period that was changed. And some type of FLC that was increased.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
They sent me it, it was a transfer into fund. And a transfer, which are on the same form, and just to clear up some negative balances from the General County Fund for Airport Fund one hundred, the Sideways Fund, the administrative office of Court, Drug Court Fund, the Youth Corps of Court Fund, MSPHI Fund, MSPHI OD two D D S Fund, County Rail Fund, Rema Project, Shelter Fund, Project Fund.
I have the time, thank you.
The Elevens Project MBA Rail Fund. Just to clear up those balances, and then also a transfer from General County to the, you know, I thought of.
Okay, that's a lot. I need a motion.
We need a motion for this one first.
So.
Okay.
My second was a motion on the floor.
Okay. All, all in favor?
There's two separate.
Yes, this is the first one, we had a motion on the floor.
Okay.
We had a motion on the floor.
Yeah, okay. Motion by you, seconded by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried. Go ahead.
I have a discussion, it's a disclaimer. This will replace the previous December sixteenth minutes that we had previously had, 'cause they didn't get entered into the system, so this will replace that one.
Okay, you got all that things?
Like the notation allows.
Okay. All right, need a motion now.
So we now we making a motion on the floor?
Previously, on the December sixteenth meeting, I had asked for a transfer to clear up some negative balances. At this point, they had not been entered, so to not confuse the bookkeeping department, it'd be best for me just to represent it where it is now, so this is where it is now, and I'm just asking to just clear it up where it is now.
All right. So.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any discussion? Motion carried.
That's, so you know, one of the things that I seen, that, I, inside, we've been sending emails and making sure they're on the right papers. So Brandon, Paige, y'all have what y'all need at that?
I need a couple other numbers here, it just has the, the one fund number, but I'll get Stephanie.
Yeah, we need, I just need to make sure that we, you know, get all on the same page. All right?
Yeah, it just be a decent one for each account.
I'll get the bond after you.
Okay, dog, you had. Bring it back to me, doesn't it? Okay, I think we've pretty much cleared up everything. Robbie, you figure out what we can do with our, um, state, state aid. Yeah. Any, any of these bills come through that's gonna help us at all? Have you noticed any that come through, they pass? It's a jumbled up mess. Is there any concern, Scott or Stephanie, with, about the detention center out there with the new administration? Whether that's gonna have a problem? I mean, we could lose them eventually.
There's been no indication of anything that, you know, amounts have been at least consistent.
I just don't know, I, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a strange new world, but.
CCA put a hundred and twenty million dollars into the ground there, and so they're gonna be trying to put that facility however they can, 'cause they got money in it, and they're, they don't just do incarceration with ICE, they do incarceration for federal, state, all over the place. So I don't feel like it's something that they would easily walk away with at all. No, there's been no indication.
Yes, then, excuse President Wilson saying that. So you know, this is just something that, my mind was kind of where President Wilson's mind was, what you're seeing, all the changes and the cuts, when we lose that out there. But in the process of looking at it, I did see in Tallahassee County, well, Heinz County, and I don't know that when they had that detention problem up there, it was the CCA in Tallahassee to look at it and make sure it's straight. And they did contract with Heinz County, and they housed it clearly. So I don't know, it was just something I seen in my studies, so I'm not gonna get big into it, but I'm just saying I seen this, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention.
If I'm not mistaken, believe, Ms. Gaines, did y'all write an article? Or did someone else write that article about Core Civic Housing, more detainees? Than anywhere in the nation? I thought I read that. So, I mean, right now, they're holding, they're holding more than anybody in the nation.
And one other concern, Scott, I had is, while I love Doge and what they're doing, I wish they were here. But all of our money is secure, that we, we got from the CARES Act money, ARPA money. There's nothing, we've got it very needs to be, and, and, and there's nothing just laying out there that could, they could claw back from us right now, 'cause we've got it all approved for different projects. Is that, is that correct?
We used the exemption that allowed us to do it, and that's what the resolution did back on December twenty-sixth. That's what it said, was we, you know, basically said we spent it all on lost costs, which we were allowed to do, and we had chucked the list out, all those lost costs and so forth, so it should be good to go. And we're still lacking a budget for the special projects.
Okay.
But it's still there, in the same, same fund.
Was one of the things you were gonna bring up, and what I wanna talk about, the, the lack of insurance. Is that something you're gonna talk about?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, that concludes my report then.
Motion to close the donation?
Yes, sir, exactly. All right, motion by Mr. Gaines, closed, terminated, seconded by Mr. Middleton, all in favor? All right.